On the housing study and we'll just turn it over right away to Kelly.
Excellent. Well, thank you everybody for coming. We're really excited to talk about our housing study that was completed. If you recall, this was a plan that was started in 2021 and we've done a lot of work, a lot of public outreach with our consultant, our DG consultants. And so everybody has a copy of the adopted plan. And for those of you at home, it is on the city's website also under the Planning Division Services webpage where you can access this. So today we wanted to talk about the next step of this. Now that we have this plan completed, we want to talk about implementation. We have some handouts for you and that we're going to go over, but really we want to start to gather feedback from council members and you know, on what initiatives, policy items that you want staff to start to focus on. Staff does have some, you know, ideas, some priorities that we think, you know, we could start with first, but we want feedback from everybody. And then also, you know, start to talk about next steps as far as, you know, if there'll be, you know, fund additional funding needed and, you know, additional feedback from staff. So that's kind of what we're hoping to accomplish today in the 45 minutes we have. So what we included in your packet is we have the executive summary. In the study, each chapter had an executive summary. So we thought it might be nice just to have that for you so you could look at the highlights of each chapter instead of reading through it again. But it is, it just kind of goes over some of the highlights and some of them we will be talking about today. And then of course, we do have the PowerPoint that we'll be going over. We're going to be, you know, talking, gathering feedback from council, but we also have talked about the study with multiple other boards and commissions here at the city, including rental housing and plant commission and, you know, some of the others. So it's something that we, you know, we are still, you know, looking for feedback from, from a lot of our different elected officials and of course, you know, boards and commissions. So with that, I think we'll start the presentation. Does anybody, I guess, have any questions before we get started? If not, we'll jump right in. Let me get the right one here. I'll give it, I'll let, I'll let Mark start working on it here. So the big item that we talked about is the continuum of housing. This is something that we talked about throughout the study. This is something that, you know, is important. It's something that, you know, I know council identified and city managers, roll-offs, goals as far as, you know, help with homelessness. This is something that, you know, and community development, we work on every day from working with homeless individuals or low-income individuals with like our C W G program, all the way to trying to attract single-family, you know, residential developers or multifamily developers to our central city. So really, this chart is to show you all the different types of housing, you know, areas there are, and it is really a continuum because different events in your life might change, you know, the type of housing you need. And the goal of this study is to really take a look at all of our housing options in the city. That's from maybe not having a house and needing shelter, all the way to having a house, you know, a nice executive housing that we want to have for our large employers here. So we are looking to fill in those gaps where we currently don't have the housing that we need. We just wanted to go through an exercise and show you how much it would cost for a new home in Oshkosh. We have our median income up here at $51,282. We took a loan ratio of 2.5. And so $128,000 is considered an affordable home in the city of Oshkosh for somebody that is earning a median income. And then we took a look at just what it costs for new construction per square foot. So that would create a 569 square foot home. And we all know that that's a very small home, but that just goes to show you that it's, it's very expensive for housing right now. So another part that we want to talk about today is how can we make it affordable for people to have housing? And then what can we do to attract developers? So it potentially, you know, they will feel confident in building in our community and, you know, maybe take a look at if there's some costs that the city could work to attract those types of developers. So today, we're really going to go over three different sections. We're going to talk about zoning, our subdivision ordinance and policy, and then also look at like our policy and project development, kind of like initiatives. And we're breaking those up into three different areas because we want to take a look at areas where we think there's like low hanging fruit, where there are changes that we can make pretty quickly and pretty easily. Staff could probably do it with ease that might, you know, make a positive impact in our community as far as housing goes. And then from a subdivision side, you know, that's something that's maybe a little bit more long-term, but we could take a look at different ways we could try to attract more types of like single-family houses to our community. And we have a few different ideas of how we can do that. And then also, you know, make sure we have enough parkland and green space to support those units. And the last one is a little bit more long-term items that we'll probably have to have additional conversation on with city council, with our community partners to talk about, you know, how we could do that. But it's just more larger initiatives, programming, potentially even new or altered organizations, public-private organizations that could help us with our housing goals that we have. So with that, we have Mark Lyons, our planning manager down in Planning Services. And then we have Jeffrey Wiki. He is our, our principal planner for housing. So the three of us are going to present different items. And I'm going to turn it over to Mark and he's going to present on the zoning items.
Thank you, Kelly. So today we're going to start talking about some potential zoning updates or changes we could make within our city code that could have an impact on housing within the city. These are all elements that were discussed within the housing study. And now we're looking at gauging where council is at and if there are things you want us to move forward with immediately looking at. So the first of those elements is accessory dwelling units. One of the things we know is increasing density can help lower the cost of housing. As you have more units per acre, more units per property, the average cost of housing on that property can go down. So one thing that is discussed within the housing study is the consideration of allowing accessory dwelling units in our residential districts. Right now residential accessory dwelling units are not permitted. So those could be allowed in our SR5, SR9, DR6, and TR10 as by right permitted use is basically opening up that option of individuals being able to do an accessory dwelling unit, whether that is, I'll go back here, whether that is in like in the picture below where it's maybe adding a unit above your detached garage, or adding a standalone independent dwelling unit in the rear, adding a dwelling unit in your basement. There's several different ways accessory dwelling units can be done. But really the point here is this is something we could do. We could open up our code to allow accessory dwelling units to provide an option for additional housing. Second, one that we hear frequently and was talked about within our study is our parking requirement specifically when it comes to multifamily development and low unit count multifamily. Think of a four-unit building, maybe a six-unit building. Currently, our code requires two spaces per dwelling unit plus one space per unit for guests. So if you're going to develop a six-unit apartment building, you could need anywhere from 14 to 15 parking spaces for that. That's a fair amount of parking, especially in an urban setting when you're trying to really make the numbers work. So one thing we could do is look at lowering our urban parking count for multifamily, maybe making it easier. They can get on a little smaller of a property, you know, and they get this potentially the negative impact is on those small units. Some of our larger, more suburban-style apartment complexes, this isn't much of a challenge for. The challenge comes for that urban infill, small unit development.
We already have situations where those large-scale ones are getting, you know, accommodations for less than...
Especially in the urban area.
Yeah.
When it comes to urban and multifamily, our code really probably overcalculates parking demand. Next is considering some density changes. You know, one of the things that is addressed in the study, and again, this is more looking at the urban area, urban core of the city, is that again, additional density lowers the cost per unit. So some of the considerations we could do to up density, making affordable housing easier to achieve is things like reduction, excuse me, reduction of minimum lot size and minimum width requirements. So if a developer can go to 12 lots instead of 10 lots, that spreads that cost out a little bit more, hopefully brings that cost a little bit more down. You think of the development, we're looking at up on Farmington, that came from a zone change of months ago at council. That's what that gentleman's trying to do. Lots are just a little bit smaller, therefore they get a couple of extra lots, spreads out that utility infrastructure cost over them.
Those are the 30-foot wide on 40-foot lots, right?
Potentially, yes.
Yep.
Yep. Similar to that, right now, it is extremely hard in the city of Oshkosh to build a new duplex, especially side-by-side duplexes. One of the things that is talked about throughout the housing study is making it easier to do duplexes or twin homes within the city. Again, that's just slight change in the density can really change affordability. As we were just talking a little while ago, you know, going to owner-occupy duplex is a very affordable mechanism to get people into the housing market. And right now, our code really prohibits them. So we could make zoning changes again to some of those SR9, SR5, TR10-type zoning districts to make these a by right permitted use and increase that density a little bit in our city. And then finally, is consider changes to allow greater flexibility of unit type. Even within our code, which you only updated in 2017, did you show how much the market has changed in those five years? We recently been talking to a developer who wanted to do townhomes and multifamily. They don't fit within our zoning code to do both of those within the same project. So looking at making that flexibility a little greater so they can mix in unit types. Maybe they do some duplexes, some townhomes, and some multifamily altogether, giving that diversification of housing that can help change the market points. Just an example of kind of what we're talking about, you know, this is just an image that shows you kind of the different ways ADUs can be done within a single property. You can have that detached ADU. You could do an attached ADU, which is on kind of the bottom-right side of the picture. You could do detached. You could even do them in a duplex setting where they have multiple ADUs in the back. Or even just really, it's a four-unit building at that point. And that's where we talk about right now, our parking counts kind of prohibit you from doing that. It's too hard to achieve it. Or even doing a garage with a unit above it. So this just kind of gives examples of some of the ways you can go about doing that.
Mark, just real quick on that too, would this be also considering, you know, many people have like a detached garage that don't park their vehicle and conversion of those existing garages?
Very much so. With that, that's all the zoning stuff. Like I said, we were trying to, as Kelly mentioned, go through, pick up some of those things that we thought could very easily make an impact, an immediate impact in our community. So kind of when we're done, we'll kind of look at some feedback from Anna if you think those are reasonable changes.
The next thing we're going to talk about is our subdivision ordinance and just some policy ideas that we do have. One of those is parkland requirements. Right now, up on the screen here, we have our current requirements per ordinance where depending on the size of the family unit, we hate, or the multifamily unit, you have to dedicate a certain amount of green space to be dedicated as parkland. And we work with our parks director, we work with the advisory parks board on that. Or if it might be in an area where the parks director does not think we need, you know, park, maybe there's a park right next door, they can, you know, if instead of dedicating funding, or instead of dedicating a park, they can pay a fee per dwelling unit or per multifamily unit. What we're finding right now is there are a lot of loops in that, or gaps in that ordinance where there are some situations, especially multifamily projects, where some developers do not have to dedicate any land for parkland or do not have to pay the fee. So right now, unless they do a CSM or a subdivision plat, they do not have to dedicate, you know, any parkland or do not have to pay that fee. So what we are hoping to do is to close that gap and look at having just, if you're creating any sort of, you know, multifamily units or single-family residential, you, this requirement applies for all where you have to do, pay the fee or else dedicate the parkland. And at the same time, we want to take a look at our Fee and Lue program and see how it matches up to other communities in our area. Because right now, staff believes it is probably too low. We want to encourage people to want to dedicate parkland instead of just paying for the fee. So we want to probably look at raising that fee to encourage people to either dedicate parkland or else give our parks director and advisory parks board additional resources to purchase parkland in the area where there is potentially a need.
Kelly, do those fees go to the general fund or are they specifically dedicated towards...
It's specifically dedicated towards parkland, yes.
And is there a thought that this would not just be for subdivisions but also infill development?
We have talked about that also. Yeah, multifamily development and infill development too.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, there's a bit of inequity between if you need a CSM and if you don't. If you don't need a CSM, your, your development has a similar impact, but you don't pay any fees. So trying to balance that out.
The other item that we did want to touch on is just right now, what a developer wants to come in and create a subdivision. Right now, city code requires that that developer pay 100% of the upfront costs for that. That's, you know, utilities, that's streets, that's sidewalks, that's everything. Right now, we do not, you know, the homeowner does not pay for any of those costs. Of course, the sub, the developer probably, you know, passes it on to the purchase or to the, you know, sale price. But right now, other communities are allowing the developer to pay for some of the costs, but then some of the costs are deferred, you know, for the future where the property owner would pay it. If it's like, maybe they put asphalt down right now, the developer does, but then in 10, 15 years when it needs to be go to concrete, then the property owner is assessed. So it's decreasing the cost for the developers, but it is pushing some of those costs onto the property owner. So that would be a shift in kind of where we're at with our policy and, and, you know, how we have been doing things. But it's just something that other communities are doing. And, you know, those communities are attracting single-family residential development. So it's just something that we did want to talk about because we, there are other communities that do 100% upfront costs, but that developer has to have to pay. But we'll talk about what other communities are doing to try to, you know, help mitigate some of those costs for the developer.
Is there a real risk there, Kelly, then, that if we defer it, that development goes bad and we're in trouble?
Well, I mean, if we, let's just say, I can use the example, we, we allow the developer to put in an asphalt street instead of concrete. And if then in 10 years, you know, we need to replace it, we want to put concrete in, I mean, then it would be assessed to the homeowner. So it'd be like, you know, any other kind of, you know, street projects we have, it go on the, you know, the property.
Yeah, there's examples of some communities, for example, the developer doesn't put the sidewalk in after the home is constructed and a percentage of the homes are constructed.
Got it.
The city goes back, puts in the sidewalks, and assesses that cost into the property owner at the time of the construction.
Got it.
Is how some communities have chosen to do it.
How would that work then if there's, I think I heard the same thing at the housing panel I was just sat, because I think that developer was on the panel, talking about this very thing. If you've got, if, if it's deferred for that sidewalk being installed and you only have, you know, kind of every other or every couple of parcels being developed, does that mean sidewalk doesn't go in until it's all filled?
So I've seen communities do it a various number of ways. Some, it's put in X number of years after the house is built and it's done per lot. Some, it is done when you reach a threshold of percentage of lots being put in, then, or excuse me, houses put in, then it's done an entire subdivision. So different communities have done it different ways.
And I think he mentioned too, the potential for like one side of the street and a walking trail on the other, something like that.
Yeah, there's, if it's something that council is interested in pursuing, we could do some more research into just getting a, some options out there of how places may do it.
Yeah. So moving ahead, we just wanted to show you kind of, I'll call it developer math. This is from a developer from a conference I went to earlier this spring. And, you know, somebody from the Milwaukee area. But it just goes to show you, you know, some of the costs that developers incur even before they start constructing the home. You know, they have about $68,000 right into it between engineering and fees, just infrastructure costs being put in that's, you know, street, utilities, sidewalk, and then just purchasing the lot also. And then obviously, then all the other costs that go along with it. So, you know, staff looks for ways, is there anything that we can do to try to decrease the cost for the developer, to try to attract, you know, the developers to come to Oshkosh, you know, where they could hopefully, you know, decrease the asking price or just make it more attractive to come to Oshkosh. And that's, you know, some other communities are doing creative things. The Village of Howard is using TIF to help pay for some infrastructure costs. Now, TIF, you have to be mindful of what you're using it on for residential. For a mixed-use TID, you can only, there can only be no more than 35% of the property in a mixed-use TID can be used for single-family residential platted lots. So that's something that we'd have to look at, but staff is certainly willing to take a look to see if TIF could be a tool that we could use to potentially maybe the city install some infrastructure or pay it as a pay-go to a developer to do. So we have some options with that. Just to the north of us, Nina purchased 130 acres, kind of in that next phase for their single-family development, and they're holding it for a developer. So the city has the holding costs right now. And then when the developer is ready to move forward, they'll sell them back for the land, kind of at costs of what they bought it for, but the city is holding it for the developer.
Is there also a situation with the land being, going into like a land trust so that the land is not necessarily owned? That part of this equation or consideration?
For this specific project?
Well, not this specific project, but I mean, in this general concept.
It would have to be something we would have to look at and see what the...
The ones we're familiar with...
Make the houses more affordable, I guess.
Yeah, the one we're familiar with that didn't really is Nina, where they're just straight holding it to remove holding costs.
Okay.
There could be other potential ways to go about that as well.
And then kind of to go along with that, you know, we have certain areas in our city which is planned for residential growth, where in our future land use plan, we want to see residential growth there. So it's, this is something that I know we've, we've talked about in the past, but should we do like targeted, you know, a targeted approach to try to attract development to certain areas? One of those areas is in our northwest side of town, kind of over by 45. We do have some area that is zoned for single-family residential and we do have some interest up there. So, you know, does it make sense for the city to look at trying to work to maybe install infrastructure up there to attract that investment up in that area and see that area of town grow? And the other area is on the west side, just kind of between Ninth Ave and 20th. You know, there's actually that property on the east side of Clairville that is not owned by, you know, the Roush family, Weizenbergs. That's actually, I just saw it's listed for sale right now. So there's quite a bit of land for sale that we have zoned for single-family residential. And it's almost like the next phase of some, you know, subdivisions over there. Does it make sense for the city to, to look at, to, you know, be involved with that, you know, to hold that land to ensure that, you know, we control it, that we can make sure that we see single-family residential in that area? And like I said, these are just a lot of different ideas that, you know, the plan in the housing study did come up with. And these are some things that, as we've been talking to developers, we've been hearing some of this feedback, you know, from them. And it's, you know, these are just some different options we want to bring forward. Like I said, we, you know, should the city perhaps borrow a million dollars every year to help, you know, put in infrastructure costs for some sort of single-family or, you know, multifamily or condos or anything? You know, just throwing ideas out here. You know, what could we do to try to encourage the development? And then also the land banking for the future residential development, which we just talked about.
Kelly, do any, I had an individual ask me this, so it might be a dumb question. I apologize if it is. But do any cities have model plans that they make available to developers?
You, it's a good segue into...
I just want to tee mark up.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. And actually Jeffrey is going to talk about some different policy ideas and projects that we could look at doing just like that.
There we go.
Like those softball ops.
So I think when you looked at that, that median income, like most of us can't afford a 300, $400,000 house. So you look at the other end of the spectrum, you know, focusing on a very low income, there's a, there's a lot of established community partnerships that have been, you know, that's how you, you don't address low-income housing by building housing. You have to address the programmatic side of things. I spent 30 years with the United Nation. We worked, we worked in supportive housing projects. It's really addressing all the things that, that, that make up, you know, the person that, that first slide that we showed, the continuum of care. And to focus on those, those and continue to work on those types of programs, there's a, there's a, there's a state set aside for supportive housing projects. But supportive housing projects take a lot of, lot of work from a lot of organizations to help organize that and to make that a reality. And also to implement any of these types of programs, there needs to be a community-based organization that, that you can, that you can go to and rely on. It opens up a lot of options with community development block grants. If we, we have an organization we can go to and help implement some of these things. Because being direct recipients of those funds, the city can't do a lot of those things. Our, our hands are kind of tied. And so, so we, we've looked at different alternatives for, for those types of organizations and we continue to evaluate that.
Are there any of those CBDOs in, in this region?
Actually, there's, there's one in our backyard. It's GOHNI. It's a, is a, is a community-based housing or development organization. And when we looked it up, we found like four, four of them in this area. Two of them were in Amro and then one was GOHNI.
Yeah, and I think that's something that will, like, the housing study did get some guidance, some potential partnerships, and GOHNI was one of those. So...
I thought GOHNI was wanting to get away from housing development.
It is.
Is that, is that changing?
No, no, that's, that's kind of their thought right now, but it's something, we at least want to have that discussion with them with kind of maybe an opportunity. So that's something that we will talk about, but we could always look at identifying other partners, you know, should that, should there be an opportunity for that.
Is also the model where you have like redevelopment authority and housing authority kind of coming together in a CDA?
CDA would be a totally different organization. Yeah.
The CBDO as defining the HUD guidelines gives you an opportunity to spend block grant funding in different ways than we presently do. But they do have to be a recognized, organized CBDO per HUD's guidelines.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think also strengthening the existing, the existing programs that are out there now. And so, I've been, I spent the last three months working with other housing programs that are out there now. There's a lot of really good things that are happening. We, we had some state funds to help people with down payment assistance. We just helped a family with a down payment on her house that she couldn't afford otherwise. And we just found out today that we could actually leverage some of those funds and combine them with other programs with Habitat for Humanity and help them with additional down payment assistance. The rehab programs that, I mean, there's always a lot of people coming forward asking for rehab assistance on existing housing. And that's really competitive with, and we need to continue that, those efforts. I think those efforts, you know, they're, they're outstanding and they need to, they need to continue and, and future support. And then expand these programs and encourage different types of housing options. I brought a little, a little model here. This is, this is what's affordable, you know, based on, you know, what we calculated as the median income. It's a, it's a 24 by 24 house with a, with a loft space. So it meets the 800 square feet minimum housing size in our current zoning ordinance, but it also is something that people can afford. But there isn't a lot of locations where these things can, can be built. We think that focusing on neighborhoods instead of taking programs that are designated for low-income neighborhoods and putting more... for low-income neighborhoods, and putting more low-income families in low-income neighborhoods, is that the idea is to really focus on areas where we're already having a lot of momentum going on, and, and strengthening the current neighborhood initiatives that are there now.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat that one more time?
Yeah.
Did you say to encourage a higher level of concentration of low-income?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard that wrong. Okay.
No, the opposite of that.
Okay.
The opposite is to focus on, on neighborhoods that already have a lot of momentum, like near schools, the so-called shoulder neighborhoods. Build upon current neighborhood initiatives, and, and coordinate existing infrastructure projects that we already have going, and leverage those things, because that momentum spurs off to everywhere else in the city. It's a different way of thinking, thinking about where you're going to focus on.
Yeah, it's a little bit more strategic, you know, targeted approach on here. You know, we just have different ideas, but like near schools, we have the new Val Phillips, we have the Webster Stanley, you know, will be rebuilt. Does it make sense to look at, you know, redevelopment revitalization efforts in between those schools? Looking at the shoulder neighborhoods around our downtown, our commerce areas, looking at all of our other neighborhood, you know, initiatives we have going on? And then, of course, with our city infrastructure projects, is there anything, you know, while the, you know, new infrastructure is going in, we'll, can we target certain areas to help them with, you know, different ways to improve the housing, you know, in those areas? So I'll let, I'll let Jeffrey keep going here. We have about 15 minutes, and we want to leave time for questions.
Sure. Yeah, and so, another initiative that we think we can, we could do right away is to, is develop a housing design booklet that has, has different alternative housing types that people can come in and say, okay, I didn't, you know, I didn't have the time to think through these things, but these are some alternatives that, that people can look at.
Yeah, one thing we really see, especially in the urban infill housing, is we have lots, and people look and they go, that looks like a small lot, urban setting. They're going to be, and people can't envision what a house may look like on that. Programs like this that Green Bay did and that we're proposing potentially to do is, we go through, we work with an architect, a designer, a lumber company, and we spec out a house that fits on that lot and a cost, and can show people, this is what you could do on here.
Big billboard sign, you could live here?
No billboards, though, but...
Right, the hologram.
Okay. But yes, something like that.
So this is, this is why, this is a live-work. This is basically a modern-day downtown Main Street. You live upstairs, you have a, I talked to this, this woman who's a seamstress. She said, I would love to have my seamstress a storefront, and then live in the same place that I work, and then pay the mortgage on my living space and my workspace at the same time. And these are, these are great infill projects. The prototype we have here is only 10 feet, 4 inches wide, which allows you to get a galley kitchen and enough space to live in. These are, and these are affordable things to build for people. It's an alternative that's really not available to a lot of people in mid-tier cities.
And we see this as a potential opportunity, is you move away from the downtown in some of our corridors of Oregon Street, has a lot of infill properties that this could potentially benefit, where you're, you're not fully commercial, you're not fully residential, you're moving out of those, even the north side and south sides of Main Street, as you move out of that typical core, there's a potential infill where this makes a lot of sense.
With more windows, I hope.
Yes, this is just a quick rendering for you.
And the next slide is what Mark talked about, is having infill opportunities with duplexes and possibly triplexes in some of these larger infill projects, which are currently allowed in our zoning ordinance.
And one thing we know with infill development, infill development costs more per square foot than green-filled suburban-style development because of utility costs and just designing, you know, they're not putting a prototypical house that you see in a suburban subdivision, so your design costs are higher, utility costs are higher for redevelopment. Allowing these duplex or triplex on infill lots is a way to help offset the fact that it's costing more to build by changing the density.
And with that, those were, like I said, just some ideas that, you know, as we met with the public, as we worked with our consultants, those are the ones that kind of bubbled up with some opportunities, perhaps, and maybe some immediate needs that we have. And, you know, right now, you know, we are looking for feedback from council, just to see if there are, were any items that we discussed today that, you know, you feel strong about or don't, or really like, or want us to look into more. I think we'll probably be having, you know, future conversations with everybody, with council. This isn't going to be our last. I think we look at this as our first of many. And, you know, we are currently looking at evaluating the resources that we do have, how we can really, you know, you know, start implementing this study with the resources that we do have. But we know to really make that profound impact, we are going to need, you know, additional resources to try to, you know, implement the study and really realize the impact that it could have on our community from a housing standpoint. So with that, I mean, we have about 10 minutes, but I would like just to see if there's any initial comments, questions, reactions to some of the items we discussed today.
Okay, if I could put up an emoji right now, it would be the mayor dancing on the table, because this is super, super exciting.
Great.
With that said, two things that real quick come to mind. We've long had a deficit of ADA, accessible or universal design for accommodating folks with mobility issues. So just kind of like, you know, lending some thought into that as well. And then the second thing is, listened to a program not too long ago, talking about not othering or further stigmatizing manufactured housing and potential changes to zoning code with regard to that. And, and so, I just want to, I guess, give a little plug for us to maybe have that conversation about what it might look like to complement this.
Okay. And that kind of goes along with containers, container housing. You know, we've seen, we've had some questions, and I think we have one in Oshkosh. So those are some new types of housing that's a little bit more affordable, you know, to put together and create, but it's something that, right, doesn't fit neatly into our code right now.
Yeah, one of the things that's talked about in the housing study is focusing less on how that house got built, and more on, does it meet the neighborhood and the character? Because you can take manufactured housing,
Yes.
and it can very easily meet the neighborhood. You can take container housing with a little bit of work, meet the character of the neighborhood, focusing less on where that house started, and more on, does it fit within our community?
Yeah. I think, so, these are great, and I think especially some of the zoning pieces seem like, you know, very relatively easy things that we can do. You know, I think we've been hearing a lot about, you know, in the study talks about the shortage of units for those who are, you know, very low, low-income. And some of these changes, it's going to take a while to see those units begin to exist. So I'm wondering, kind of what's, we have the need now, and how do we address that now?
Yeah, absolutely. And we know that the city is not going to solve that issue by ourselves. We have to work with our community partners. So obviously, you know, working with the day-by-day, you know, warming shelter is a good first step. We're continuing to work on the tiny home project. You know, we have COTS, new transitional housing, so we still have to fill in quite a few gaps, you know, for those. But something that just came, we were talking to Officer Mann in the police department, and we were talking about, how can we help maybe folks that are staying at the warming shelter, you know, kind of get over that hump? They might have a job, but having to pay that first and last month's, you know, down payment to get in their own place, that's a huge obstacle. So we actually identified some funds that we have within our program that we could work with day-by-day to help these folks, you know, get to where they need to go to help them, you know, move on, and kind of graduate from one type of housing to go to another. So I think it's really about strengthening those community partnerships. But then, as we talked about, looking at ways, evaluating our resources such as CDBG, and looking at that community development-based organization. Other communities are doing that, and really try to, you know, leverage that and, and, you know, do kind of unique projects that, you know, would meet those needs of some folks.
Just kind of going back to the ADU, ADUs real quick. I know in the past, some concerns have been brought up by planning that this could potentially be, you know, some, I don't know, property condition or safety concerns. But one of the other things that's come up recently, too, is Airbnb. Would, if we were looking at adding ADUs, is there a mechanism in which you can somehow minimize those turning into vacation rentals so that they truly do serve year-round housing?
We would have to take a look. I'm not familiar with a zoning-based mechanism to do that. There may be other options. It's not something we could do through zoning, but there may be other options we could look at.
I, the things you've highlighted are great. Fully supportive of nearly everything you've highlighted in terms of ADUs, parking, I think really looking at the CDBG dollars that we use, and how effective they are, and are they meeting the actual needs of the community right now is a, is a very good step in terms of trying to find the immediate funding sources. I don't know, I can't, personally, I won't, I won't comment if I think all those funds are being used in a great way or not, but I think that's a targeted spot where we can definitely look.
Yep.
But there's, there's goods and bads to doing that. There's going to be a cost to changing those things. Subdivision and policy things, I think those are good things to be talking about. My only question, I guess, and I don't expect an answer, is, is those types of policy changes that you're going to bring to us, while we've identified them in this study, are there going to be developers that are actually going to follow through with the second part of that? You know, if we do this change, is it actually going to elicit a change in the environment? Will it help them? Will they actually commit to, yeah, we're going to look to do this? And that's tough to answer. We can't, we can't guarantee anything, but...
Right.
I, I can say we have talked to developers that have, obviously, they haven't put their money where their mouth is, but they've said, if you were willing to offer assistance of some nature on this project, we could probably make it work. So it's hard to, to your exact point there, guarantee it's going to happen.
No.
But we have had developers that have at least expressed to us, there's, there's some consideration going on there.
And I like the idea of land banking to a point, but we've also shown that trying to predict the future, we can't do it, and we don't do it very well when we try to. Industrial parks
Yeah.
are a good example, right?
Yep.
It's taking a leap of faith, I think, in a lot of those aspects, but trying to protect ourselves or set us up.
Right.
So if it's a, you know, a modest risk
Right.
compared to extreme risk
Yeah.
definitely things to consider
Mm-hmm.
in terms of being able to predict and then also incentivize development in those spaces, like you mentioned, with, with targeted TIDs in a space.
Right.
It's, it's worthy of discussion.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I got to think through the land banking a little more, too. That's the one that got my attention, that I'm not, not quite there yet, but that maybe just be personal ignorance as opposed to
It's a new
professional judgment.
Yeah. I mean, I've never heard of a community doing that besides
Yeah.
Nina, so I think it's a kind of a new concept.
Yeah, certainly the zoning changes. And first off, great job on all of this. The zone changes, I mean, the parking stuff, anything that increases density, I think that's all great. I really like the idea of using infill approach to spreading out our affordable housing throughout the city. I think that's a sustainable, long-term solution. I like that a lot more than this, you know, there's always this tendency to think, well, Magic Bolt will do a big new development here, and we'll just solve it here. It's just, that's not realistic. That's not how cities work.
Mm-hmm.
Duplexes, I think that's a great idea. I think that has potential, too, to, I mean, you can, I don't know, maybe people think duplex, they think cheaper, but I mean, I think that's a potential way to fill that $200,000, $300,000 gap, which, you know, right, middle-class families are looking for. And certainly the idea of having plans, anything that makes it easier to, to get a developer into some of these more difficult-to-develop properties is, is great. So, no, this is good stuff.
Great, excellent.
I just want to throw one more thing out there, too, and when we're talking about universal design, intergenerational design, I think that can kind of apply almost anywhere, but it does kind of have its own little niche.
Absolutely, and that's kind of goes along with the ADUs, too.
And the density.
Yeah, and then, yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask one more piece? I think this may have come up in Plan Commission a couple weeks ago with some of the, maybe it was for the Morgan Crossing Phase 2 TIF. I know we can't, based on state statute, require a certain percentage of lower-income units
Right.
in new developments. Are there ways that we can use TIF or other kinds of incentives to encourage, incentivize?
I mean, with TIF, you absolutely can.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know,
We can require it.
That's up, that's up to the discretion of the council. But, you know, perhaps we could even look for other resources.
Right.
You know, something else in the capital stack to try to help with that, too. So that is something we could definitely look at also.
Yeah. I did hear one other thing today, and that was about incentivizing, or, I guess, being a bigger partner in undergrounding of parking for allowances of more green space and/or units. I know, you know, we've been kind of hesitant, but it may be a conversation to think about in the future.
As, Morgan Crossing Phase 2 is a good example of that.
Yes.
It went to underground parking to achieve their needs, and if made sense, and that, you know, council decided TIF made sense to assist with that.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about this.
Good, well, you'll be hearing from us. Don't worry about that. And if you have any other thoughts or comments after today, please feel free to give us a call, or stop by, or shoot us an email. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you